That all the lights were gonna turn on? Would you like one? Well, I'm, I'm, I don't know how we look on the screen, so. If it's definitely too dark to the people at home, then I'm happy with it. There're way too many switches over there.
Yeah. Everything's gotta be AI. I was gonna remember how it was set the last time we ran here.
And then you'll have to ask it.
You see, that one's not good.
No, probably don't want that one.
Little better.
Yeah, these just seem to be in dim mode.
Dim.
There you go.
Okay.
There you go. Thanks, Mike.
Have some value.
So I'd like to call the meeting to order. See, we have a forum assemble. Um, Mr. Pruitt has informed us that he'll be unable to attend. First order of business is to look at the approval of the agenda. I trust everyone's had a chance to take a look at it. Anyone wanna make any changes to the agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the agenda is approved. Executed brief announcements by authority members. Uh, anyone have anything? No? Okay. Moving right along, public comment. I see we have one member of the public in the gallery and I don't know who might be online. Uh, there was one, there is no longer.
Okay, brights got too late.
The lights got too bright. Alright, so that worked. Not seeing any requests. Not seeing any requests for public comment. Uh, let's go to the consent agenda. Uh, which we received. It, uh, just has the usual stuff on it. Any motion to approve the consensus? Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done. Uh, the August twenty eighth and September twenty fifth meeting minutes, either of those are done. We will not move to approve those. Thank you, Bill. Whole business. Body twenty twenty one update.
Yes, Chair, I'd like to share some updates. Uh, we have successfully done what I hope to be the last site visit. So on October eighth, Jason and I and Carl Audell from DHCD, he's our program manager, he's been overseeing the project for a while. And then we were fortunate to have two local reps, really great technicians who came out and walked with us along Gilbert Station Road. So we saw the last ten locations that they were supposed to have been activated. One of the things that aren't in the presentation is a couple of people walked up while we were there and asked when they were going to get connected. So not only was it fortuitous that we were out there, but we saw two local uh, residents who had come up and asked us when they were going to get connected. And it was good because the lead supervisor tech was there and he took their names and numbers and showed excellent customer service. Um, actually gave Jason and I his card and we exchanged phone number. So we're in good shape there. Uh, Carl was very happy with what he saw. And I guess we can move on and look at a couple of these things. Um, you know, here's a cabinet that was close to a, a pole that they had to put up to cross a, a creek. So they went over a couple of culverts along that line and it just it reminded us how difficult it is to do this type of work. The fence that you see behind the cabinet came in afterward. So you know, every time someone comes out and puts a new fence in, they have to call.
Miss utility.
Yes, exactly. And, uh, you know, it's very important that that's done. And this is a good example. Uh, here's another one that was close to a creek bed. Uh, things are looking good there. It's not going to be swallowed up unless we have another hurricane Elaine, but hopefully that doesn't happen here in Almaral anytime soon. And let's see.
I think one thing worth noting, um, in the, the walkthrough of these sites, um, when we did our own walkthroughs of some prior sites that were, some of which had been delivered many months before. Um, there were a lot of deficiencies, um, cables that were not buried, um, areas of erosion around, uh, where the ground had been disturbed without properly, uh, being restored. Um, this walkthrough, there was none of that. Um, and the work that they did, uh, to finish off the project, this is on Gilbert Station, it was those last ten spots, uh, was done properly, uh, with good efforts to restore, um, and a willingness to go ahead and take that extra step of, for instance, boring under the road because that was the most logical path instead of trying to snake something around something else. There was um, a lot of efforts made to accommodate, um, the, the landscape and accommodate, um, things that were already in place, including avoiding trees. So uh, in general, we were very pleased with the work along Gilbert Station Road. Uh, we do still receive reports of uh, areas, uh, from earlier in this project, um, where there are lines unburied and there are other deficiencies, uh, including, uh, failure to deliver service that, um, we continue to escalate, um, but, um, at least here at the end, um, they did the job right.
Particular reason why the difference, you think?
Um, there were, there was a shift in both the contractor, um, as well as a shift towards more in-house. So one of the encouraging things that, uh, the chief engineer for our region pointed out is they now have, uh, drop crews in-house, including having all of their own equipment, including the equipment to do the bores. Um, and for, uh, the line work, they have a full complement of staff and equipment. Um, so in the event that, and, and they are doing private expansions that are ongoing right now, but in the event that they were to uh, seek other public funding to cover some other area, they would actually be able to do that work in-house rather than having to contract out.
Yeah, the only thing that I would hope that all of us talk to residents is that those earlier projects is important for people to step up and say, look, I've got cable running down the side of my private road. Can you get somebody out to fix it? Although we've asked them to do it and we'll ask again until we're blue in the face. We had a couple of calls today, actually, of where there's cable, you know, off to the side of the road that needs to be cleared. Um, we have cable that's hanging across the road and trees, um, that needs to be cleared. The, the importance of them coming back and auditing and doing that type of work is not remiss to us. We know it's important. But it's helpful if we have people in the community call in and let us know. So that, that's just a, not a plea, but just a recommendation. We'd love them to come out and do it all and say, look, we're done, but there's just things that they put in during that rush, I guess, that they still haven't gone out and repaired.
I think that's gotta be another part of the difference here too, is we saw, I saw at the end of my driveway how much they were rushing in the final weeks to meet the deadlines to get this work done and surely they, what was it, ten drops here?
Yeah.
Like, I imagine they were able to take their time.
Yep.
Okay, moving on.
Speaking of earlier work.
Yeah, I'll go through this relatively quickly. DHCD has recognized that Brightspeed has a company and Lumen as the prior company spent a lot more on this project than they originally estimated. So that's the first thing everyone needs to understand. And we also recognize that Lumen, Century Link and Brightspeed, while they were doing this work, also took the opportunity to build off the grant area. So if they were running in a specific area and thought it was great to put a pond in, a device in that would serve someone outside of the grant area, they would do it. We just don't want to have to pay full price for it. Um, so we definitely don't want to pay for an overbuild into a Comcast area. And the state doesn't wanna pay for that either. The grants have to be specific to grant-supported areas. All that to say, the only issue that we're having is making sure that the materials cost is relevant and the construction and the labor costs are, are relevant to the project itself. So going through all the materials that we received Monday, we just received everything Monday. We're having to filter through and sit through and make sure that none of it is going to an area that's not supported by the grant. Um, so that's something that DHCD and BAO will work with. And I'm, I'm targeting at least two weeks. Um, but what was, what we would like to ask and as the chief administrative officer, I think I've been given this before where even though this will be the biggest invoice that the broadband authority has paid, just the, the authority for us to work through it with our finance department and issue the payment without having to come back and meet with everyone to make sure you guys are okay with our recommendations. So far, we've seen positives. Um, and if we identify any negatives or DHCD identify any negatives, that's the only reason we would call, call the broadband authority in for additional support or authorization to pay.
And provide a little.
This this screen shows the cost, but our, our obligation's two point nine.
Uh, it's less than two point nine now. Uh, it's two point.
Three and five seventy-five.
So we, we actually, we.
Covered more.
We uncovered more.
Yeah, and that money's gonna be freed up for however the authority decides to use it. The state's money will just go back into the state general. That's my understanding.
Let's go back into.
So you basically are gonna evaluate the scope of work for compliance.
Yeah.
And then you pay to what are every two months, which, what, what is that number again?
Uh, it's two point three for the state, uh, and five forty for us. We'd originally, uh, forbidden, uh, I'm sorry, five seventy for us. We originally, uh, incurred six hundred and forty. Um, and following the, uh, the adjustments made, um, to the passings count, uh, we adjusted ours down significantly. Um, and for a little bit of clarity, they are currently invoicing us the full amount directly towards construction costs. So that's gonna be towards their contractors. Um, their direct materials, labor, as well as, uh, a significant portion of the construction costs, um, are considered their match. Um, our sort of game plan for, uh, an initial analysis is to count the number of ponds that they delivered. Uh, that's a easily identifiable invoice item. Um, and if the number of ponds match what we are expecting, um, which is roughly fourteen hundred and sixty-six divided by eight, um, we should be somewhere in that ballpark of the number of, of, uh, gigabit passive optical. I don't remember what the N is.
No.
No.
Uh, yeah.
Then, uh, that'll give us some idea that they're, uh, billing us for the correct number of locations. Um, and then it's about going into each project area, verifying that each project area matches what is expected.
What that area.
And if we see any discrepancies at that point, we will drill down further. Um, we'll obviously work, um, as we said, with finance and with DHCD, uh, to make sure everybody's, everybody's happy with the numbers before we, um, we move forward with any remittances.
And this a, a similar process, if not exactly the same process, is what you, you have done with every other invoice we've ever paid. So this is not a departure from our.
Yeah, no, and the, the, the biggest difference, I think, between prior efforts is that, um, in prior efforts, because we were getting it as it was
Right, as opposed to.
Being incurred, it was.
Long after the fact.
Right, it was easier to say, this is from this project area, this is from this project area and, and move forward that way, but.
I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable with you guys proceeding on this and getting back to us only, if and only if there is some question or concern in your minds.
I have a question about this. Just, I, I think you hinted toward the answer here, just wanna make sure I'm clear. Construction, materials and labor. Materials and labor are those, uh, costs incurred by Brightspeed for them paying for materials and labor, but construction is outsourced to subcontractors who had their own material.
Exactly, right, exactly.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, and the codes, near as we can tell, looking at their invoice package, uh, the coding is, uh, consistent. And that's why we should be able to comprehensively say, this is the number of ponds that were ordered towards this project. This is the number of O N Ts that were.
Okay. Anything else I can bring to you on?
Okay, um, administrative oversight.
It was my look towards the, the council.
I saw that.
I, I feel like Richie, we have already delegated this oversight previously.
You know, I was, I was looking for resolutions and if you've been the chief administrative officer for so long, I couldn't find any.
It's been a while.
So I, I mean, I would propose a motion to authorize the chief administrative officer to administer the grant, including review of provider invoices and records and requests to finance and budget to disperse grant funds as deemed appropriate.
I'd like to make that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries. Thank you, Mr.
I'll forward that to you.
Thank you. I am so pleased we are closing in on resolution. I don't know that this will be resolved before twenty twenty-five, but we can.
But perhaps the light is not the train.
Yeah.
Alright, moving on, twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two, thank you Chair. We are actively upping our passings count every day. So it's very difficult to think about putting up a passings number, meaning these are the number of homes that have been passed by the Firefly and Dominion Energy, Appalachian Power and REC Work. You know, there's been some slowdowns, you know, we'll mention some of them. Uh, the, the primary one is in the southern area of the county, Appalachian Power Keen. Um, we have, we have seen that slowdown, but we're trying to get that back on a pace that'll bring them in sometime in summer of twenty twenty-five. I'm speaking as if I'm running this project, but it's really TJ PDC and, and Firefly, and I don't think we have any one of those two entities here. Um, you know, there's been a little bit of slowdown in the northern side, the Whitehall area up there. But I think it'll start picking up. You know, Dominion has been doing some really excellent work, uh, doing the underground portions of the the, the St. John Road and the Gordonsville Road area. Jason was, um, customer service friendly, community service friendly, and he went out and talked to one of the most latest projects, Turkey Sag Road, which is on the other side, coming down from Peters Mountain toward Gordonsville. Um, that side will be somewhat late as well, but hopefully we'll be able to convince Firefly to, to complete it as they complete St. John Road, which is scheduled for this fall. So connections should be happening on St. John Road soon. So we're looking forward to that. Um.
I have a question about that. And we, we may, I appreciate we may not know the answer to it right now, but I, I live on Turkey Sag and y'all may remember that the work of.
He's in ARPA.
Um, if you'll give me the address, I can verify. Um, but, uh, as we'll come to in a minute, um, I have lots of docs and I have accounted for all of them.
Okay, that's, that's not the, that's not the jig with residents, is it?
Yeah, there's a, there's an ongoing discussion and I, I think it's appropriate to bring it up and we should probably have a separate new business, old business as we go forward is the ARPA grant is active. So as they're going through and doing work in specific areas, they are going out and adding the people who weren't included into bottom twenty-two.
Maybe you guys could, in the future, just bring that in in the BAO update.
Yeah. So that would be perfect. Something to work on. Um, so as it, as it stands, we're still set to complete by the end of twenty twenty-five. And continuing to encourage people to go to the site and register. So anyone who is interested in Firefly should be registering at register.fireflyvirgin.com and going out and looking at the, the pages that they present each time they start action on a specific site. So as an example, the Chair and I have both received recent letters saying not we're next, but we're close to next.
Yeah, we're coming in the spring. So, you know, go out and please sign up.
And he's trying to jump the line. Yeah.
But I also got a lot.
You did too, okay. So we're working, we're working.
Um, no updates to this data and in fact, um, I'll, uh, offer a correction. Um, we received notice that the increase of miles of make-ready construction from eighty-nine to ninety-eight was unfortunately a typographical error. It's still eighty-nine. Um, but, um, we haven't received any additional, uh, updates.
Be ready like.
Yeah. They are, well, so we're not counting any of the Dominion.
Okay, well, that, that's all that I've been seeing.
Yeah, that is, so the, the REC make-ready is done and, and connections are being delivered. The, uh, AEP make-ready is um, really the polite way we'll say it is that it is currently on hiatus. Um, and when work crews shift back to Almaral, then we should see progress there. Um, this doesn't count any of the Dominion make-ready or, or, uh, construction work. Uh, that is on the next slide, which also has no updates, um, for this meeting.
Justin, related to this this, the work, um, and the, the tropical storm hurricane remnants that we had. Was there damage done to any of the installations? Um, I'm just curious from.
I didn't hear of any to.
Yeah.
Now, I know we had a couple of outages based on trees falling on Brightspeed Long Hall.
Right.
Um, but, yeah.
Basically, basically, uh, totally good. Okay, that's true.
We've not, we've not heard from any customers, um, but we can do a quick survey and just check with any of them if they have any.
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay, a last thing to talk about on bottom twenty-two. Firefly came to the county and asked to lease a portion of Yancey Community Center. If you've been to Yancey Community Center, or if you keep going south, uh, there's a water treatment facility there. It's, it's back in the woods and there's a small gate that blocks people from accessing, accessing it. Uh, they see this as a perfect site for what's called a fiber communication center. So it'll be a small, smallish hut, no windows, air conditioning, generator power, backup battery power, and then a lot of power coming into that specific unit. Um, this requires a board supervisor's approval. On order from the county executive to sign a lease with an outside entity, the board of supervisors have to approve it. And that also has to be advertised. So the public hearing for that has to be advertised. So there's two board of supervisors agenda items coming up. The first will be December eleventh. And that's the authorization to advertise. And then the second will be on January fifteenth, where the public can speak out about the, the lease and the site itself. The materials about the site will be presented during that time. And if there's any questions that the board of supervisors have about the lease itself, they'll be able to present it to BAO and um, we'll see if we can answer all those questions. The other thing that this has to be, be done is typically it has to have its own site plan. So there's another whole process within the planning department that the site plans, including, you know, surveying and everything else, has to be done correctly. Um, there's gonna be a lot of ground level work here because the trees will have to be cleared. There'll have to be some concrete poured, just a lot of, lot of work to go into this specific site. So Firefly is, is working on that without knowing whether the board of supervisors will approve the lease. We're hoping that all of that happens on the fifteenth, instead of us having questions brought back and then we have to start back at, not square one specifically, but we'll have to potentially schedule yet another public hearing. So we're hoping to have all of the board of supervisors' questions answered before the fifteenth. That's our goal.
Is it desirable or useful for the broadband authority to weigh in on this?
Jason had that excellent question, and I, I think the answer to that is yes. I think a, a positive vote up. The only issue that we would have is by subjecting our board of supervisor members to some sort of, you see what I mean? There's a little bit of a conflict. That if they say, well, they could say, you know, Supervisor Pruitt could, could say no or.
You know, you, you have supervisors on these community boards that.
Right, I guess you're right.
The necessary and proper part of.
Right, that's the only reason we are bouncing it back.
Would be the other direction. I can't, once I, once the board has acted, I take instruction from the board's action. But until the board's act, then I'm free to make recommendations.
Yeah.
Through things as part of the board. I, I will bring up, not that it's probably relevant, but just that it jumps out at me that we got a notice this week that the, uh, Yancey Center was experiencing unplanned internet inaccessibility due to fiber issues reported by Brightspeed.
Yeah, it's pretty ironic.
Wow.
Okay, so you, you, you understood, understand that the first customer will probably be, be the community center itself.
Well, I'm kind of thinking, you know, as part of the lease might include free service to the community center.
Well, certainly, um, sure, you know, having, as, as the representative for that part of the, uh, county, um, having good service at that community center is really important to me.
Yes, yeah.
The potential issue I might have is I don't have enough detail about the, the size of the, the, the size of the building, location of the building, the size of the generator, size of fuel storage, the size, the makeup of the battery energy storage system in terms of the specific location on the property. The concept of using county property for this may be fine, but is this proposal the one that should be supported? And I, I don't know.
Now I don't know what alternatives there are.
Right, I, I just, I, I don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable. I don't have enough data to, to be able to say, yes, this is a, this, and this proposal and this site is a, is a good idea. Uh, maybe it needs to be, you know, fifty feet to the other way or behind the building or.
Yep.
Well, we can certainly look at this, uh, you know, our December meeting.
Yes, that would be fun. If, if you would, if you could forward this information along with any information that you have about the size, the generators and fuel storage.
I don't have those. I mean.
That, that might be, that might be useful information.
Once they lease the property, they could, that, that's one of the risks that Andy Herrick and I have also looked into. Bill Struthers working with us. I don't wanna go into a lot of the details, but maybe I should, I, you know.
Is it still being negotiated?
Too many cooks.
It's still being negotiated.
The lease itself?
Yeah.
Not at this point.
I mean, they, I didn't know, I don't know the status of it. I haven't been.
Yeah, I mean, to, to write in the size of the UPS and the size of the generator itself into the lease or something as complex as we're gonna provide unlimited service to the community center, write that into the lease is a little too.
Well, part of the reason I ask.
We're gonna take forever. I shouldn't have said that out loud, but, but, I mean.
Um, part of the reason I ask is also me putting on just my ABBA hat and my CDD hat and trying to help the board. So for example, we're bringing to the board of supervisors some special exceptions for, uh, Ravanna Water and Sewer Authority.
Yeah.
Because they have fuel storage tanks that are require a setback and, and the size of the property doesn't allow for that setback. Could we be setting up the board of supervisors to do this and they come along and say, okay, we want a thousand gallon fuel storage tanks and where it goes, can't go there unless there's a special exception, which then means you have to renegotiate the lease or.
Our, our next meeting is on the tenth and, um, there really wouldn't be any opportunity, tenth of December, there's not any opportunity for us to even speak on this until the fifteenth of January, according to the current calendar. Uh, and by the time the public hearing comes around, which is the eleventh of December, there may be more information available. So I, I suggest we put this on the agenda for the meeting on the tenth. And, and see if it's something that, that we can find a consensus on at that time.
And notice that, that the eleventh is notification of a public.
Right, right.
I expect nothing but.
There, there may or may not be more information available.
To say that we're going to.
It'll be on the consent agenda and just set a date for January fifteenth and that'll.
Um, I'll note, this is actually co-located with the water treatment on that site. And actually, uh, if you take a closer look and we can provide better, uh, versions of the plot, but, um, they're actually gonna be using the same, uh, generator and, uh, propane backup. So, uh, I think that this is actually going to fit within the original scope of the RWSA, um, facility. Um, so I think that might help us, that, that might provide the clarity that we need, that it's, it's actually fitting already in the, in the use that was uh, zoned and scoped for.
Great. Can I ask you guys, uh, to reach out to Mr. Wood and his team and, uh, just let them know we, we'd like to consider this matter.
Okay.
For the opportunity to provide support. No guarantee there, uh, and if they have some more details, uh, that would help us reach a conclusion. Okay? Anything else on twenty twenty-two? Anything else on twenty twenty-two?
No.
Very good. Uh, the B A A O update.
Uh, a short update, um, the, uh, Department of Housing and Community Development's broadband office released its bead eligible locations list. This is something that we've been waiting for and that we previewed for you all, that we might see a large number of unserved and underserved areas. Um, based on my initial data, I was worried that we might see as many as thirty-six hundred. Um, it was about half that, um, fourteen hundred and eighty-one locations, uh, that represent, uh, sixteen hundred and sixty-three units. Um, the good news, uh, is that uh, the vast majority of those are in either a served area, so served by a provider who, for whatever reason, the the challenge process didn't work out the way that they expected. Um, or is part of one of our projects. Um, so, um, based on the analysis that I've had, uh, since Monday to do, um, we are expecting that, uh, the actual number is going to be about four hundred locations. Um, that's. Yeah, so it's, it's, it still hits our expectation that we're at ninety-nine percent of the locations in Almaral County are uh, within a project, but it still leaves us with one percent. Um, there is a distinct possibility that we're going to be able to work with providers, um, to address some of those locations without a bead outlay. Um, that could cause some complexity as we get closer to, um, the actual bead process starting, um, because even if we have uh, a commitment, if we are not providing, uh, funds within a certain, uh, type that, uh, the bead NOFO identifies, such as ARPA dollars, to, uh, address those locations, then these will still be on the list. Um, and uh, obviously, our concern is that we want to make sure that, uh, these bead dollars are spent wisely uh, and not unnecessarily. We had a chance to talk to D H C D, express our concerns, um, and they owned um, that there were going to be discrepancies in their data. Um, there could be areas that they were going to miss, and unfortunately, largely, their hands are tied. Um, so we're working with, we're going to be working with the providers to come up with a strategy.
Which is what you have to do with bead money anyway.
Yep, uh, to come up with a strategy for making sure that whatever bead proposals come in accurately reflect uh, the locations that are actually unserved or underserved.
Is there a, like a time date on which this is determined?
Uh, the, well, uh, so when you look at that number of sixteen hundred, um, that ship has sailed. Um, the, they've already published it, and on November first, they believe they're going to be able to start their bead process, which requires as many as, uh, at at least sixty days, but because it falls over the holidays, they'll probably extend that into, uh, January somewhat. Um, so our race is to, um, meet with providers, um, express, find ways to, um, get enforceable commitments where possible, um, to locations that we know are already served. And that might literally look like us handing them a dollar, uh, to, uh, to to commit to serving areas that they're already serving. Um, and then the other opportunities, just to work with the providers that are already serving those locations to put together, um, a comprehensive bid for areas that they would like to pursue bead funding for. That includes essentially a zero dollar bid for the areas that they are already serving.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that D H C D didn't take as much time as they needed to have the no bid situation go away. It's going to be across the Commonwealth. There's going to be a lot of no bid situations for the bead money simply because there wasn't enough work done with the providers to make sure that they didn't.
Trying to iron out the maps, though, is just going to be an impossible task. You, at some point, you got to decide, I'm going to go forward and we'll try and fix it weekend afterwards.
Exactly, Chair. And then there's new construction. This is all taking so very long, you can't keep in step with how my, how many new parcels are added and how that, how that'll impact accounts.
And honestly, for our consideration, um, we want to make sure that the bead deployment money is spent, uh, particularly wisely because uh, wisely spent bead money means more bead non-deployment funds for digital inclusion activities in the future.
What's the caramel methodology to contract this week?
So our, uh, in terms of the bead proposal, uh, the only request that's going to come to the county is for a letter of support. Um, we previously discussed, uh, uh, well, every request from a vendor for a letter of support, uh, we previously discussed that coming before, uh, the authority. I believe that that's still what is the expectation. Um, and we're hoping that one of the things that, uh, that we can, we can avert is by working with the providers closely over the next few months. Um, when they come to us with a request for a letter of support, it comes with commitments to, uh, only bid on areas that are actually unserved, to honor zero dollar bids for areas that are actually already served. Um, and that way, um, our ten percent isn't just our ten percent, it's actually fundamentally making sure that the proposals that are on the table are going to be, uh, ones that reflect our understanding. I did, I did just, because I, I know what you're thinking, I did discuss with, uh, procurement, um, what they thought about the process for us putting a letter out, and they pointed out that since there's no process where we actually are involved on the front end. Instead, it's just vendors coming and making a request of us, that there isn't really a procurement. This isn't really a procurement. Uh, that even if we wanted to initiate a procurement process, um, where people would have to submit proposals to us, that really isn't a mechanism for something that does not include money.
Anything else? Uh, I think the next thing on the agenda then was the rescheduling the date, the January twenty-second meeting.
Yes, sir.
And the conflict is.
There's a board meeting, a budget meeting in this, well, yes, it's in this room, but it would also preclude two members from attending.
Uh, let me just get this straight, the board doesn't want to change their meeting? Uh, so is there a proposal for a better date time? Uh, and or do we need to have this meeting?
I'm not sure.
I will not be available on that meet, on that date, but there's no reason that the rest of the authority could meet. On from the twenty-fourth on.
I do like our general practice of planning and scheduling meetings and then canceling them if we believe that we're not going to use them, and I think that.
Yeah.
Particularly given that we have a couple of falls in the air right now, I think we'd be wise to continue to hold that.
So is there an earlier day than the twenty-fourth, if you want to have me, if you'd like to not have me? The twenty-ninth looks good.
I think our preference should be to ensure everybody can be here.
Yeah, that's so nice of you, but we have no input on on Mr. Pruitt, so we're, we're guessing in terms of his availability.
And and I shouldn't speak for him, but, um, the board will meet as an organizational meeting very beginning of January. And at that meeting, decide who is on what committee and, you know. Most of those won't change.
Right.
Mike has indicated that that may be one that he will be looking because of his job obligations. So I just want to leave that out there without saying that that's going to happen. So personally, looking at my calendar, I could do the twenty-third.
Twenty-third works for me. Well, any objections then? Let's just make sure. I I move that we change the scheduled meeting date for January twenty-second of twenty twenty-five to January twenty-third. Same bat time, same dead, that place, assuming that they're available.
We will verify and get back to you all.
Yeah. There a second? All in favor, say aye. Very good. Thank you, Mike. Any new business? Not hearing a rush of new business? Any other matters? Anyone want to go home? I I move that we adjourn this meeting. All in favor? We stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.